Dick's Deal Days are back and new daily deals are happening now. Score fifty percent off Nike and Adidas footwear. Big savings on the Dick's Deal Days are back and new daily deals are happening now. Score fifty percent off Nike and Adidas footwear. Big savings on the Dick's Deal Days are back and new daily deals are happening now. Score fifty percent off Nike and Adidas footwear. Big savings on the Dick's Deal Days are back and new daily deals are happening now. Score fifty percent off Nike and Adidas footwear. Big savings on the Dick's Deal Days are back and new daily deals are happening now. Score fifty percent off Nike and Adidas footwear. Big savings on the Dick's Deal Days are back and new daily deals are happening now. Score fifty percent off Nike and Adidas footwear. Big savings on the Dick's Deal Days are back and new daily deals are happening now. Score fifty percent off Nike and Adidas footwear. Big savings on the Dick's Deal Days are back and new daily deals are happening now. Score fifty percent off Nike and Adidas footwear. Big savings on the Dick's Deal Days are back and new daily deals are happening now. Score fifty percent off Nike and Adidas footwear. Big savings on the Dick's Deal Days are back and new daily deals are happening now. Score fifty percent off Nike and Adidas footwear. Big savings on the Dick's Deal Days are back and new daily deals are happening now. Score fifty percent off Nike and Adidas footwear. Big savings on the Dick's Deal Days are back and new daily deals are happening now. Score fifty percent off Nike and Adidas footwear. Big savings on the Dick's Deal Days are back and new daily deals are happening now. Score fifty percent off Nike and Adidas footwear. Big savings on the Dick's Deal Days are back and new daily deals are happening now. Score fifty percent off Nike and Adidas footwear. Big savings on the Dick's Deal Days are back and new daily deals are happening now. Score fifty percent off Nike and Adidas footwear. Big savings on the Dick's Deal Days are back and new daily deals are happening now. Score fifty percent off Nike and Adidas footwear. Big savings on the Dick's Deal Days are back and new daily deals are happening now. Score fifty percent off Nike and Adidas footwear. Big savings on the Dick's Deal Days are back and new daily deals are happening now. Score fifty percent off Nike and Adidas footwear. Big savings on the Dick's Deal Days are back and new daily deals are happening now. Score fifty percent off Nike and Adidas footwear. Big savings on the Dick's Deal Days are back and new daily deals are happening now. Score fifty percent off Nike and Adidas footwear. Big savings on the Dick's Deal Days are back and new daily deals are happening now. Score fifty percent off Nike and Adidas footwear. Big savings on the Dick's Deal Days are back and new daily deals are happening now. Score fifty percent off Nike and Adidas footwear. Big savings on the Dick's Deal Days are back and new daily deals are happening now. Score fifty percent off Nike and Adidas footwear. Big savings on the Dick's Deal Days are back and new daily deals are happening now. Score fifty percent off Nike and Adidas footwear. Big savings on the Dick's Deal Days are back and new daily deals are happening now. Score fifty percent off Nike and Adidas footwear. Big savings on the Dick's Deal Days are back and new daily deals are happening now. Score fifty percent off Nike and Adidas footwear. Big savings on the Dick's Deal Days are back and new daily deals are happening now. Score fifty percent off Nike and Adidas footwear. Big savings on the Dick's Deal Days are back and new daily deals are happening now. Score fifty percent off Nike and Adidas footwear. Big savings on the Dick's Deal Days are back and new daily deals are happening now. Score fifty percent off Nike and Adidas footwear. Big savings on the Dick's Deal Days are back and new daily deals are happening now. Score fifty percent off Nike and Adidas footwear. Big savings on the Dick's Deal Days are back and new daily deals are happening now. Score fifty percent off Nike and Adidas footwear. Big savings on the Dick's Deal Days are back and new daily deals are happening now. Score fifty percent off Nike and Adidas footwear. Big savings on the Dick's Deal Days are back and new daily deals are happening now. Score fifty percent off Nike and Adidas footwear. Big savings on the Dick's Deal Days are back and new daily deals are happening now. Score fifty percent off Nike and Adidas footwear. Big savings on the Dick's Deal Days are back and new daily deals are happening now. Score fifty percent off Nike and Adidas footwear. Big savings on the Dick's Deal Days are back and new daily deals are happening now. Score fifty percent off Nike and Adidas footwear. Big savings on the Dick's Deal Days are back and new daily deals are happening now. Score fifty percent off Nike and Adidas footwear.
What an absolute honor to welcome you to Big Duffel. I have given the task, of course, greeting you with a prayer with the liberty of saying a few words of welcome. I want to briefly address you, certainly as Big Duffel's pastor, but first and foremost, as your brother. Yes, yes, yes. I am a proud member of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated. I am a proud graduate of College University. I did the two together. I pledge in our Beta Chapter located in Washington DC. That means Beta Chapter was established on December 20th, 1907. Now let's do the math for a moment. That's the fall semester. One of the founders of Beta Chapter was brother by the name of William Lyle, right? He married a fly hitchhiker from St. Louis by the name of Duffle Hedger. Yeah, and then on January 15th, that is spring semester. You see what I'm on with this day, right? The semester when I played is really the year. Thanks for going along with the semester when I played, spring, spring 1991. I lived on Third Street directly across the street from, watch this, Lucy Deeslow. Did you hear what I said? Did you hear what I said? I greet you as your brother. It really, really is a pleasure to have you here. And my wife, my wonderful wife, Michelle, is the most gracious lady. Yes, she is. She's the most gracious lady of Alpha Kappa Alpha. And I wish she could be here. She is in New Orleans tonight and will be back on Thursday. But certainly she would want me to greet you and extend all hospitality also. Let me take a moment now and have your congregation just to say thank you, Madam President. Sister Cynthia, thank you all for being here, all of you, those in the legislature who are here to address matters of political importance in the day and age we are enjoying the defender democracy. I greet you as the, as the pastor slash mayor of the city halls we are. Big Duffel has a well-known history of being a place of political activism. This is not just a church, Billy Carlson, not just a church where we talk about salvation and the kingdom to come. This is a church where we address social inequities and the kingdom here at hand. So I am thankful for the obvious partnership that we formed, for the collaborations that exist, the relationships that exist here. And I hope we can do more. In talking to Madam President, we sent a letter because we know who you are, we know what you do. And when January 15th comes around, as we, of course, honor Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., that weekend, we're hoping your chapter will be able to be with us as we salute you for the many, many acts of service you do, including matters like this where you create an atmosphere so we can, we can be advised and be informed and talk about this habit to protect democracy. So thank you again, both as your brother, Skefi, and certainly as the pastor here of Big Duffel. Now with all those pleasantries exchanged, let's take a moment and go over it all. Heads of others, I suppose. God, we love you. We pause and we say thank you. We thank you, dear God, for this house. We call it Big Duffel, Alpha Kappa Alpha, House of God. We thank you, dear God, for the hospitality that has been extended to all those who come to these doors. This institution has been serving Atlanta, serving Georgia, and serving America, dear God, since 1847. And tonight we are excited to have it open as a place of service for our wonderful sisters, for Alpha Kappa Alpha. We pray, dear God, that you open hearts and minds tonight. Allow us to draw closer to you, dear God, as we draw closer to one another and learn and thank you and have much to learn. Allow your spirit to permeate our hearts. Allow your spirit to permeate our minds and to be present in this place this evening. This is our prayer. In your precious, magical, and most wonderful name. Amen. Thank you.
Yes, we're always marked by a challenge and we're, we've got some high issues. But good evening
Good evening.
To the Reverend Dr. Jonathan C. Augustine, esteemed lawmakers, distinguished guests, and dedicated members of our community. It is my sincere pleasure to welcome you all to this important policy forum where voices unite to discuss the pressing issues that shape our society and our future. Your presence here reflects a shared commitment to thoughtful dialogue, civic engagement, and the pursuit of effective public policy. And so tonight, as we gather in this forum, I'm honored to serve as the president of the New Land O'Vega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, which was chartered in 1980 with a vision that extends far beyond service. See, because from its inception forty-five years ago, our organization has been dedicated not only to serving the immediate needs of our community, but also to advocating for meaningful change and informing citizens about the issues that impact their daily lives. Over the past four decades, we have worked tirelessly to bridge gaps, foster dialogue, and empower individuals with the knowledge and resources they need to participate fully in our democracy. Now, as you heard a little bit about the history and the connections that two of our divine non-organizations have, for over 117 years, our founders understood that true community service involves more than addressing urgent needs. It requires active advocacy and dissemination of accurate, 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 timely information. Their foresight has guided us as we have grown into a trusted source for advocacy and education. Always striving to ensure that every community member has a voice and the tools to make informed decisions. So as we look ahead to the upcoming legislative session and the midterm elections, the importance of an informed electorate cannot be overstated. Our democracy thrives when citizens engage with the issues, understand the stakes, and make choices grounded in knowledge and critical thought. In a time when information is abundant but sometimes confusing and misleading, our role in providing clarity, context, and reliable guidance is more vital than ever. Let's use this forum tonight to reaffirm our commitment to these principles. Because by working together, faith-based, community, lawmakers, advocates, and citizens, we can ensure that our community remains vibrant, resilient, and guided by informed participation. Thank you for being here, for your dedication, and for your belief in the power of collective action. Let's make this evening a milestone on a shared journey of service, advocacy, and informed citizenship. Thank you. Now, before we get into the conversation, let's introduce the woman that will be posing the questions and guiding us in the conversation. Donna R. is a award-winning journalist with a passion for storytelling. She currently serves as host of GPB's Lawmakers and, listen, Lawmakers and Law.
Lawmakers, huh? What's law makers doing?
Beyond the note after previously serving as a Capitol correspondent for GPB's Public Affairs Show. Ms. R. spent nearly thirty years at WSITV, Atlanta Live News, the NBC affiliate, where she created the acclaimed Class Act and Class Note Simmons on the News, which allowed her to honor hundreds of Metro Atlanta teachers while also giving her a unique view of education in action. Most recently, she served as Chief Communications Officer for Fulton County Schools. She also worked as Director of Communications for the Cobb County School District. Both managerial positions allowed her to continue spotlighting innovative, creative, exceptional news in education. Now, her educational background in journalism began at Chatham University in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, where she received a degree in Mass Communications Administration and Management. And after a short stint in radio at KTV in Pittsburgh, she obtained a master's degree in journalism from Northwestern University. Her work has honored her seven Emmys and three Gabriel Awards. She has also won prestigious honors for her work for the National Association of Black Journalists, Atlanta Association of Black Journalists, Georgia Associated Press, Society of Professional Journalists, Georgia Association of Educators, and Professional Association of Georgia Educators. As an active community volunteer, Ms. R.'s previous board or advisory position in both the pearly nonprofits, Sheltering Arms Child, Care Early Learning at Family Centers, Weston Boys and Girls Club, Old National Christian Academy, Save the Children, Georgia Association of Family Daycare Providers, the Statewide Belt Task Force, and the Georgia School Age Care Association. Now certainly her community services and field nations include Magnolia Chapter of Bloomington Incorporated, the Atlanta Chapter of Jack and Jill of America, and, oh, love it, the New Land O'Vega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Fraternity Incorporated. Donna and her husband, Army Major retired, Billy Dudley Reed Jr., live in the city of South Fulton and are the proud parents of three beautiful daughters. We are in for a wonderful conversation this evening. Let's welcome our moderator, Donna R.
Thank you so much, Madam President, and thank you so much, Reverend Dr. Augustine, for having us here. I am thrilled to be here because I think of this as the, as the host of lawmakers. It's my pre-lawmaker show, okay? Let's, let's call it that. For those of you who don't know, once the legislative session begins on Georgia Public Broadcast, and live every night that they are in chambers, we have a live show talking about what they are doing at the Capitol. It will be our fifty-sixth year, and for me personally, seven years that I've been doing it. It really is a chance to find out what your lawmakers are doing, who they are, and to understand the issues you should care about. Because it's not about just coming down for a special day at the Capitol, like Alpha Kappa Alpha Fraternity Incorporated Day at the Capitol. It's about paying attention to what's going on every single day, especially leading up to crossover day and the very end of the session, so from beginning to end. So now that's my shameless plug for you to tune in once the legislative session begins on January 15th. We were hit the ground running. Now are these wonderful lawmakers who I've had a chance to interview over the years. Let me tell you a little bit about them. I'm going alphabetical order, and that starts with the youngest, and that is Representative Bryce Berry. For those who don't know, I guess raise your hand a little bit. He proudly serves as the state representative for Georgia's 56th House District. He champions the causes of equity, education, and community progress. And as a state representative, he is the youngest person elected in the legislature, in the legislature of Georgia since Julian Vaughn. He is a proud son of, of a family of educators who grip understanding the transformative power of education. He is an active public school teacher. That means while he is at the Capitol, he is still a teacher. Representatives very knows firsthand the challenges and opportunities within Georgia's classrooms. And he brings the voice of teachers, of students, and families to the state Capitol. You could walk down the hallway and he is stopped by everybody who sees him because he stops and listens. He ensures the policies reflect the, reflect the lived realities of those that they affect most. He's a graduate of Morehouse College with a degree in economics. Representative Bryce Berry, ladies first. And Reverend, the former Representative Terry Alexis Cummings. J D, he is the Senate Representative for Georgia House District Thirty-nine, representing Mableton and Smyrna. She is an attorney and retired federal law enforcement officer who grew up in New Jersey and earned her B A in political science from Rutgers University. And then she can't pay out of her, and then she completed her law degree at Georgetown University. She began her career by being accepted into the prestigious U.S. Department of Justice Fawdner's Attorney Program. Representative Cummings spent three decades in law and criminal justice, becoming the first attorney at the Metropolitan Correctional Center in Chicago and advancing to a supervisory position there at U S P in Atlanta. Her work included major cases such as the post-pride hearings of Chicago's L. Rockin Gang and the first federal death penalty case in Georgia above the murder of a U S P Atlanta correctional officer. In the Georgia House, she serves on Public Safety and Homeland Superior Committees, also serves on banks and banking, and the State Properties Committee. And she's vice chair of the Cobb County Legislative Delegation, House Whip for the Georgia Legislative Black Caucus, and a member of the Georgia House Democratic Caucus Whip Team, Representative Terry Cummings. And Representative Dawson is not here, so I'll get to Representative El Ahmadi Holly. He was elected into public office in twenty eighteen. They keep history as well, the first person, calling the first Democrat to win his historically Republican semi-rural district. And he is currently representative for House District One Sixteen. Representative Holly chairs the bipartisan Henry County Legislative Delegation and actively serves on working families in Georgia. His district has been redrawn to cover Henry and DeKalb Counties. And he also sits on a number of committees, the House Committee on Code Revision, the Industry and Labor Committee, Transportation, Small Business Development, and Judicial Non-Civil Committee. Representative Holly is also the founder of the Georgia Africa Legislative Caucus, where he currently serves as co-chair. In twenty twenty-three, he received the House Legislature of the Year Award for the Georgia Legislative Black Caucus. And that happens to be the nation's largest state body of African-American lawmakers. So, ladies and gentlemen, please keep, give it up for State Representative El Ahmadi Holly. I'll get it out, I'll get it out. And last, but certainly not least, Representative Angela Moore. Representative Moore represents the citizens of the ninety-first House District of Georgia, which includes South DeKalb and South Rockdale Counties. And she was first elected to the House in twenty twenty-one and currently serves on the following standing committees, Creative Arts and Entertainment, Energy Utilities, Telecommunications, Higher Education. And she is, has been recognized by the President of the United States for extensive volunteerism for the people and conferred as Legislature of the Year for twenty twenty-five, among numerous other awards. And we'll talk about some of the legislation she has too. Ladies and gentlemen, Representative Angela Moore. I'm very happy to have, to, to, that all of you are here. And I wanted to introduce you before I asked you each to kind of make an opening statement of sorts. It's not a debate, but kind of tell us a little bit about yourself. And I'll start with you, Representative Cummings, down on the end.
Good evening, everyone. It's indeed a pleasure to be here, and I'm really happy to see so many faces because there's so much going on and there's a zillion other places that you could be here, that, that you could be this evening. But you're here with us to learn about, a little bit about what is happening down at the Capitol and what will be happening. Because this year, next year, twenty twenty-six, in my opinion, is going to be quite different for us down there and really for Georgia and for the rest of the country because of everything that's going on. A little bit about myself, I came in, in twenty twenty-two, and I've been fortunate enough to be able to get some local legislation passed for my area, which is, you know, Mableton mostly. And some of the things that I'm working on, several different bills, actually, my passion is housing and mental health. Those two areas are, are my passion. Luckily, mental health really, we had some good bills that passed, we got some money. And to me, the main thing next year is going to be keeping the money where it's at. I don't know if we'll be able to get additional funds, but it's critical where we were able to get funding, particularly when it comes to medical, mental health, that we don't lose that. And it's going to be a fight because there's only, you know, so much money in the budget. There are talks going on right now that none of us are, are part of, but you could guess that because of what's happening in D.C. So unless federal funds come through, that means the state's going to be stepping in in separate areas, in different areas, because they have no choice. And so for me, our priorities are to keep the money where we have it. We still need funding for, you know, the schools and the children, and we still need funding. The SNAP benefits finally came through, which most of you, you know, know about. We did get some money for school safety that unfortunately, I think it went the wrong direction, but we do have it because I'm a proponent of, you know, gun control, serious gun control, and that's the biggest killer of children right now, are guns. So I think there's a lot of work before us to do, but let's face it, we're in an election year next year. Half of the Senate is running for office, so, and that's going to continue to change as you see more people stepping out to run. So it is going to be some, you know, changes, but we all have legislation. I have, I'm trying to, I introduced a bill to define habitability since that was not defined in House Bill Four Oh Four, which gave some tenants some rights, not a whole lot, but it said that your dwelling has to be habitable, but it doesn't define it. That's Georgia for you. So we're trying, I'll be working on trying to get, you know, that passed. But other, other than that, is trying to keep the funding where we were successful in getting it, keeping out some of the bad laws, which did not come up last session, which I believe will absolutely be coming up this session, and trying to make sure that we're working on the right campaign so that we can flip some of these seats.
Thank you so much, Representative Berry.
Thank you all so much for being here tonight on this cold night, on this traffic-ridden night. Y'all chose to be here with Boring Old Us, and I appreciate that. My name is Bryce Berry. I serve District Fifty-Six, which is downtown, midtown, and southwest Atlanta. So it's actually about two blocks away from where we are right now, the way Jeremanning works. Downtown is split into about five districts, and I have a northern part of downtown. So downtown, midtown, and southwest Atlanta. And it's just great to be here tonight, and as someone that believes in the collective power, organizing, and the collective action, understanding that we work together in this effort, we don't do this alone. We need you all as you need us. And so it, it, we are just so appreciative of being here. Some of my initiatives that I have been working on last session, we got an increase of the Hope Scholarship Equity Fund. I can nerd out about that a little bit more, but what that is, is students at U G A, they get their full tuition covered under the Hope Scholarship. However, student at Morehouse only qualifies about twenty-five percent. So we went down there, talked about how Morehouse, Clark Atlanta, and Spelman, they were losing students for this. And so we were able to get an increase of that money in the Hope Scholarship. So the next school year, a student at Morehouse gets the same amount of money as a student at U G A. Now, of course, not full tuition because, trust me, Morehouse is expensive, I know. But it is the same amount of money that a U G A student gets as a Morehouse student would get as well. And we'll keep going further for H B C U's because I believe in the foundational power of H B C U's. Georgia has a lot of H B C U's, and we don't do far enough for H B C U's. So we're gonna go further with H B C security. We've seen bomb threats and we've seen shooting threats over the past few years, and our governor has done absolutely nothing about it. And so we're gonna continue to have a relentless fight to ensure that H B Cs get the money they need to secure their campuses and secure our students. But furthermore, education is also, of course, the biggest thing for me. As you said, I'm a family, I come from a family educated. My mom was a teacher, my grandmother was a teacher, my great-grandmother was a teacher as well. And so my whole life, I've always heard Bryce should be teaching growing up, and I never wanted to teach. I know, I actually wanted to be a preacher, Dr. Reverend Augustine. I actually wanted to be a preacher. I never, I never wanted to teach, but here I am teaching and being a politician. So I might preach one day. There's still time, there's still time. I'm only twenty-four. But, you know, education is also the majority of our budget. It's over fifty percent of what our budget goes to is education funds, K through twelve and higher education. So we gotta look at things like literacy. We have a literacy crisis in our state. We're over two-thirds of black boys in third grade are not reading on grade level here in Atlanta. That's a problem. It's a problem we don't, we're not working with parents and with school districts. Instead, we're squeezing districts for, to lose more money rather than giving them the money they need to fix the crises that we are facing. So education is one, housing is another one, rent is too high. I won't say the word I want to say, but rent is too high. And we have to bring, we have to bring down rents, and we have to take on slum lords. And these corporate landlords are coming in here, our city, into our state, buying up property, buying up our land, and jacking the prices of rent. And you never meet your landlord in a day in life. That's a problem. That's not right. And we have to understand that every other state can seem to do this. Georgia is always one of six states, one of five states, one of seven states. And so my goal in legislature is to change that trajectory for Georgia. Because I don't think that Georgia deserves to be one of the blank, to not do something when we know we have the power and capacity to do something. So that's why I'm excited to have the conversation with y'all tonight about. Thank you all.
Thank you. Representative Holly.
Thank you, and thank you for being here. I'm gonna start off before I get into the legislative part. This is a beautiful journal they've given us. I really love being in institutions that have long existed to support our community. Oftentimes, we are working in spaces of the Capitol where we have to fight for our, respect of our identity. But it's amazing for me to be in this church, literally where Morris Brown was able to get its founding. And for the work that we've done, you know, in the legislature, to work to help Morris Brown to be able to get its certification back through the TRACS program. I remember coming here for the first graduations and, and since that time of, of that twenty-year gap or so when the school was non-accredited. And it just goes to show that while we can make changes at the Capitol, it's great to come back home to a facility that has united our families, has served as a launching pad for our ideas about what true education is. And it's good to see us in a place like this tonight because this is how we pour our dedication back into a facility that has given so much to our generations. So yes, I am Elma D. Holly, a proud graduate of Morehouse College, as well as at University of West Georgia. I got my master's in public administration with a specific focus on strategic planning and management. While I am appreciative of going into the eighth year at the Georgia State Capitol, what I would like to remind people is that while I am a Democrat and while Republicans do have the majority, don't ever think that simply because their majority may have control of the agenda, that they have control of our lives. And it's good for us even to remember us being here in a facility that has been established to re-center us amidst the challenges of life for our communities to stand up and gain our power. We need to be reminded that there's always one who is in control. And what it means is that when your party is not necessarily in control, that does not limit your ability to influence the policies and the mindsets of people around you, provided you tell the truth, provided that you remain, affirming your conviction. You'll actually get, I've gotten handshakes from Republicans over issues that I've been completely against them about. But when you stand on business and you stand on principle, you sleep very well at night. You're gonna find a lot in this legislature that's gonna seem very weird and crazy. And what I would like to, I would like just to give, give you some hope on this because, yes, there's a lot of things that surprise us. And many times I always find, like, sometimes our colleagues will go to the well, and they'll be like, oh, my gosh, why are you Republicans bringing this? It was obvious why they're bringing this because they don't believe what you believe, right? But it's another reason too. America is going to look very different in the next ten to fifteen years. It's not gonna look like the America that we always told ourselves would exist. And you can, you can go back so far as even the election of President Barack Obama. You know, many of us never saw that coming, but that day is not only, did it, it not only happened, but it bore fruit. And these are fruits that are being paid into generations into our present time. And a lot of the policies that we push at the Capitol reflect the changing demographics of America. And so when you see last-ditch efforts to target our communities, to take away resources, to label diversity, equity, inclusion as something that only benefits African-Americans and not primarily the white women, who are many times the beneficiaries of that, mind you, the wives and, and daughters of people that we work with at the Capitol. What we're seeing is that this is, this labeling of, or targeting, is a really last-ditch efforts of a losing cause. And the fact that our, as, as Ms. Lowery said, you know, our Georgia Black Legislative Caucus, the largest caucus of African-American legislators, are right here in Georgia, and it's constantly growing. It's the reason why there's been so much pushback against how our districts are, even though you gerrymander them. We're just moving in, we're constantly growing. What it means is that the blessings of our ancestors and the sacrifice of their lives, it's paying its way into making sure that not only can we stand firmly against bills that do not align with our community's values, but even further, while our main, our main opportunity there is to pass a budget. That's the only real reason statutorily why we're there. But it also means that we get to push a conversation into how our communities will be respected and how you will have to value us. And in all the ways you value us is you have to see us. If you don't see us, it's hard for them to see us where it counts in terms of our money. So I'm glad for this conversation, and even further, I'm just really glad I can be in this institution of grace that has blessed all of us. Thank you.
Representative Moore.
Good evening. Angela Moore, as I told you, I'm out of DeKalb County. I represent South DeKalb, Stonecrest in particular, the city of Stonecrest. Is somebody clapping in here for Stonecrest? Yeah. And all of South Rockdale. I used to be a part of this man's delegation over in Henry. Let it go because Stockbridge is still my baby. So if you're in Stockbridge, I'm your forever representative over there. It's in my heart. So good evening. I wanted to say hello to the Reverend pastor here tonight because I didn't get a chance to say hello when I came in. You women are so amazing. We should just fall out of our chair. And I just wanted to just stop for a second. Sorry about invitation, but mostly about black women. I got a call from a very dear friend, Latino friend of mine a few weeks ago. His daughters just graduated from high school. It's summertime. He asked me, could I help them get a job? I said, what can they do? He says, well, not much. He started telling me. He started telling me that they worked in, as, you know, in restaurants, as waitresses. And as I listened to the dad go on, I started laughing out loud. It wasn't, it wasn't because of, you know, that they were waitresses, but he was asking me to find them a position in front of so many other women who have put so much into their careers, even when they were in high school. And he said, what are you laughing about? And I said, the thought that you have not enrolled your daughters in a college, even a community college. I said, do you know the women that are coming out of high school now who are going straight into college? Some of them are coming out of high school with a two-year diploma under a bachelorette program. And I said, as a father, and I am a daddy's girl, my daddy reared me all by himself for many years, me and my sister. I couldn't imagine any other woman that I know not going to college, not having a litany of things, including my, my friend down here, I'm talking about you, Terry. And how many women, these young women have to stand behind. So when I hear all of the different bios, it just blows me away that someone is not trying to go to college. Every black man in the country was going to. Every black man in the country was going to college back in the forties and fifties. It was, it was a, a necessary thing to do. But then in the eighties, black women started attending colleges and they started going to everything. So I just wanted to say thank you all for being the people that the rest of the women are gonna stand on their shoulders and you're leading the way. But in this instance, I said, "The best thing you can do this summer is put your children in a car and go show them every college you can get them into. Try to get a loan, sell your home. You have to save money. Sell your home. You and your wife move into an apartment and put your daughters in college because ten years from now, there's so many, you know, fabulous women out here, they will never be able to compete. And in a few more years, there won't be any waitress positions." The state of Georgia and a lot of other states are investing now in so much automation. You won't see a single female or male, and especially black or Latino, standing around serving anybody anymore. So congratulations to all of the women in here. I know that we are amazing and I'm so proud of all of us. But nevertheless, I do serve on higher education, which is a very big passion of mine, as well as arts and entertainment, fine arts and entertainment for the state of Georgia, which I'd like to say is one of the oldest professions here in Georgia, absolutely next to religious. And we don't have that at the state Capitol, in our chamber when we pray. But it is something that Georgia is very proud of, to bring so much arts and entertainment here to the state of Georgia. I'm originally from Washington DC. I've lived half my life in New York, half in DC. So arts and entertainment, fine arts in particular, are one of my passions. And I'm so proud that the state set me onto the committee to help the state of Georgia to move forward in this industry. And we are not lacking in our entertainment here. I am so happy that we are the entertainment capital almost of the world. We can almost say almost of the world. Hollywood is no more. We are the Hollywood of the South. And outside of film and arts, we have all of the different museums that are bringing Georgia to the forefront. It's not just behind the camera or in front of the camera anymore. And it is a huge business. It brings more than any peach, any bag of peaches or any peanuts or anything else. Arts and entertainment is here and it is what's causing us to be able to put money into the budget for Hope, extra money, hopefully for our black farmers this year. I don't wanna say this out loud, but I'm gonna just say it because it came up today. The President of the United States is now putting money in the budget for black farmers. I'm not, don't clap. Please don't clap, but I'm so happy for that. It is one of my passions here for Georgia, that our agricultural business will exceed any other state for the next couple of years. But however, black farmers in particular who have been, who have been scraping by. So hopefully over the next seven to eight years, they'll be automated, just like we would in any restaurant in the next seven years. They'll be able to have the automation to be able to tend their crop and be able to sell to the world. So we will be a world-class agricultural state. We are running neck and neck right now with South Carolina, and that is one of the places agricultural that we are huge on here in Georgia. So maybe if, and, and most of these farmers have degrees. So we have, I have a, a family whose daughters are gonna have to compete with the farmers and the black farmers too. So it's a very serious thing about the education. I do serve on the, on higher education. So I'm, I'm with my educator here. I come from a long-litany of family that are educators. So I'm very happy to know that we'll be able to send young men and young women to college on a Hope Scholarship. Hopefully, we can kind of fluctuate that bar from a steady B. If they dip down into a C, they lose their Hope Scholarship right now. I would like for them to be able to have a second chance. So I think one of my big things is democracy in all states and all forms, and I am into social justice.
Well, thank you all very much. We're gonna talk about a lot of the different things you guys talked about. There's so much to talk about. I do wanna mention that Representative Robert Dawson was supposed to be here. His flight was delayed. He was really trying to make it. But he is unable to get back to Atlanta in time for this. But I want to let you know that he is also working very hard down at the Capitol. You guys talked about a lot of things, and I wanna get to something that I think is crucial because as was mentioned, it's an election year. And yes, there are people who are in the Senate and the House running for higher office because there are constitutional offices, of course, this year. The Governor, Lieutenant Governor, Secretary of State, all of those, and a lot of people are leaving to do those things. But the main thing in an election year is, we've seen it before, that there will be moves to change election laws this coming year. Now, right now, the state law says, and this was passed, I believe, last session, Georgia must eliminate QR codes for ballots by July of next year. But it seems no one has figured out how to do that yet. So I would like to get your thoughts on what we might see in terms of election laws that people will want to see passed very quickly before even the primaries. Any thoughts?
I can talk to the lawyer.
Yeah.
Well, for, for me, I'm waiting to see. For me, I'm waiting to see when we're going to be, going to pay for ballots. Because as you know, this year Dominion Voting Machine was purchased by a billionaire who is intent on pushing President Trump's agenda. And, you know, the Dominion Voting Machine, it's been a big deal. They actually sued and they won their lawsuit. So I was a little bit surprised that they sold the entire company to a billionaire. But his intent is to really put them out of, out of commission. So I haven't heard anything about that on the local level yet. But as you know, the whole thing with challenging election, since Biden was elected a couple of years ago, it's been a huge issue, you know, down here in Georgia. So I, I expect that to be a, a major issue, exactly what will we be voting on in May. With the, with the scan codes, I'm, I'm, I'm be honest, I don't know too much about, about that. I do know that with all these elections coming up, the way that any time an election is announced, the governor has a certain amount of time to announce when the election for a new position. Like when Jason Estevan left his seat because he's running for governor, that left a vacancy in the Senate for his old seat. And so matter of fact, the runoff election for that position is this coming Tuesday. Where the governor has a certain amount of time to announce when the next election will be held. And what we have seen, and especially Elle, who's working with this next election, is that they're, they choose dates that impact voter turnout. So they picked the date of November the eighteenth, which was after the PSC race, which was November the fourth. And a lot more people came out. And of course, it was the week before Thanksgiving. And both counties, Fulton and Cobb, those are two counties that were impacted, both wrote to the mayor, I mean, to the governor, asking him to, you know, change the voting day. Cause whenever you have elections, it's a cost. It's a cost to that county. So, and he said, "No." So that means that both Fulton County and Cobb County had to come up with, you know, a hundred thousand. Then you're tiring out your workers, your volunteers. So everything has to be done over again and over again and over again. And another Senator just elect, just announced that he's leaving his seat because he's running for Lieutenant Governor. So now that seat's gonna be up for election. So it's absolutely a, a impact. What the Georgia Election Board is doing specifically, I have not followed that closely. I have not seen anything recently. But I would say get ready for some changes because they're always trying to change things. Whenever, if they can get rid of early voting and Sunday voting, that's on the list. And we, the interesting thing about that is that it's the Republicans that touted that initiative to get more Republicans out to vote. Little did, did they know that Democrats would take advantage of it. And most of us, I don't even know where my regular voting place is because I only advance vote. You know, I do it every time, and I think a lot of us do. So since it's working so well, now of course they wanna pull that back and, you know, ended. Of course, sold to the polls. A lot of us do that after church. That became very, you know, popular, not only, you know, for Democrats, but blacks, for minorities. So now they wanna, you know, pull, pull that back. So those are the two things that I think we are going to see them trying to, you know, push and us trying to challenge and of course, you know, stop. And the other thing for me is to pay the ballot.
So Representative Holly, oh, I'm sorry, Representative Moore, go ahead. I, I wonder if you involve Representative Holly with some of the election, some of the election legislation, or what's going on?
So actually, and, and, and I'll take, I'll be brief, so allow for my colleague to respond. Just over the years, we've, we've had to pass multiple, or at least tried to pass multiple checks on this overreach that we've been seeing. I remember even when we first got into office, to propose a bill to have an independent redistricting committee, simply because you have, we're too much partisan gerrymandering of districts. And, and to explain it to the public, when you carve up that district, not only does it disenfranchise the people who are there, but also it actually disrupts the relationship that you have with the person who was elected and assigned to prioritize your concerns. Because when they're no longer your representative, then you're having to cast that, the burden or the responsibility of getting things done on someone else who was literally just not, you know, in that race. That's happened in my district in Henryburg. You know, not only do we, you know, did these, not only did you have a cut after the census, but even before then, sometimes you'll do mid-cycle cuts. And so a lot of this, along with Representative Cummings, when she acknowledged the fact that they would try to do as much as they can to take away from your ability to vote. We saw that with Senate Bill two zero two. And, and as you mentioned as well, you know, our former colleague in the House, who's now running for state senate, Roger Bruce, has really put forth, he really wants to see us to be able to, he's ready to introduce a bill so that if you live within the district, that you can vote at any of the precincts in your areas to make it easier for people who work. Doesn't mean that you have to go to the one down the street from you, but if there's one that's, you know, near your job, it's in your district, you should be able to have access to that polling precinct. I think with respect to what you were saying, Ms. Lowry, it's hard for them to try to pull off that QR code because in truth, this technology has been provided by vendors. And so the vendors oftentimes control what we as legislators, what we actually see in terms of the reality of having these, these ballots being provided them, as well as the systems there. Remember, we're legislators. Many of us do not have a connection to those companies, those vendors that actually create that system. And so you can pass it to allow for the implementation of it, but trying to take it away without damaging the industry itself means that you actually have to look at it very sharply so that you can regulate, but at the same time that you don't, you don't use government to target entities from being able to fully participate.
Representative Moore, did you wanna add something?
I won't repeat, but I came about in a time when DIBO was in control. And everyone urged us to look into getting rid of the electronic machines, which we spent half a billion dollars on over the years. And it, and they were new machines back in the early two thousands. I was one of the first women of color to ever to run for Secretary of State. And I ran because I truly believed in the, the bare bottom basics of democracy. I also believe in everyone's right to vote. The Georgia Legislature at the time and still, and especially now, had been putting thorns and thistles in our path. I don't wanna say that it's so much of black people today, but more Democrat than it is Republican, which means power and who's gonna run the show. And so for the Republicans to be able to stymie us at the polls, that's one. Two, we don't show up as much as they do, obviously. Because there are a lot of Democrats who should be at the polls and they don't go. And I know we go out here telling you all every year, and, and let's just be real, every candidate who's running has to go out and beg their mama, daddy, sister, brother, your cousin, aunt Susan for money. Then we have to go out and pay for signs in the ground, signs in the air, commercials on TV, stand out on the street, jumping up and down, T-shirts. You can't tell me you don't know there's an election. And for us to be whole grown adults and we don't go out there and do our civic, you know, duties is beyond me. There are two hundred and eleven thousand Democrats that haven't voted in this last election. And then you still have a president now who's crying about losing an election in that prior election. Now he's back again, but we are making strides and coming back as Democrats here in the state of Georgia. If there was only a way for us just to vote and not have to worry about which party. But to be honest, when we got to DIBO, DIBO made it so hard for us to become a democratic state or a populace anymore. They started fooling with the machines. It would have been wonderful to go back to paper ballots, but it's impossible in this day and time. Taking the QR code off, how many people are here thinking, "All you have to do is reprint something." Taking the QR code off is very easy to do. They're going into a machine, the machine has a barcode. We do not need to have a QR code as well. That's too much, as they would have said, manipulation into the voting system. So they wanna leave it up to a machine to literally count the ballots. But when the thesis hits the oscillating projectile, we're standing in the background counting ballots by hand, as we did three times in the last presidential election. And you saw how it was televised every day. How long did it take for those ballots to be counted by hand and recounted three times in the state of Georgia, only to find out the man lost? But we shouldn't have to go through that. And as brilliant as the people are, black, white, Republican, Democrat, who go to these fancy universities to learn about computer science and programming, why is it that we can't get our voting, our voting under control nationwide? The people at MIT all by themselves should have been able to figure this out. So it is about power. And there's, there's a former Senator, God rest his soul, Benson Ford. He told me, he says, "You know, Angela, power is a powerful F for DJI. And people would do anything to have that little bit of power." It doesn't matter what level of power it is, whether it's somebody sitting on the street corner with a tent over their head, they have a little power. They can zip up their, their tent and go to sleep at night. They have more power than the man on the other side of the tent in the street. Or whether you're under the Capitol somewhere, or you're sitting in the White House. Power in all forms is dangerous. And so one of the most important things that we have to do in this entire life, other than love one another, within a godly love, is to get out there and vote. Because who we put in power to run this world, and I think we see that now, even some of the people who voted the other way are seeing how dangerous that power can be when it's misused against another human being and against the world. So to answer your question, they can be taken. They can be reprinted.
And every year we've had an election year when there have been efforts to suppress voting, you know, in some kind of way. So we're likely to see some of those bills come out. And so if you remain aware of that. I wanna talk about something with education. There was a Hope Scholarship, there is a study committee over the summer that focused on looking at equity when it comes to, we had this Hope Scholarship that's been successful. But this, they have focused on merit, this is a merit-based, looking at lead-based scholarships. And, and I think there's going to be a big move in that direction. I, I'll start with Representative Barry. In terms of people understanding that the Hope Scholarship has done what it's needed to do, but now there's this feeling that it's still left behind a lot of students who haven't been able who haven't been able to get scholarships, and it's because it's based upon need. So talk about that a little bit, and what you know of what might happen.
Correct, so thank you for that question. So the Hope Scholarship is grade-based, so you have to have a certain GPA average in order to achieve the Hope Scholarship. What we need is a need-based scholarship, which opens up more doors for lower-income minority students in our state, which would say that if you are making a certain income level, you get a scholarship. Back to what I said earlier, Georgia's one of, I think, five states that does not have a need-based scholarship program. And so I'm encouraged to see that, but I'm also wanting to see more equity initiatives when it comes to Hope, when it comes to felons that have served their time, being able to access Hope Scholarship in our need-based scholarship program, that needs to happen as well. People that have been single mothers, opening up to folks that have dropped out of school. We need to expand Hope and this need-based scholarship into more forms, but I'm encouraged to see there is a movement in the direction for a need-based scholarship, because again, Georgia's one of five states that does not have a need-based scholarship program, which says that if your family is making lower than this income, you automatically qualify for this. Imagine, imagine what the doors that we open for our students. Say you automatically qualify for this. When we know that students already in these income levels struggle with paying for things like food, paying for things like housing, paying for college itself, having to take out loans upon loans upon loans, and we as a state can say, you just automatically qualify for this, that will be a door opener for so many students, and we will see more students going to college in our state as well, and keeping that same academic and economic talent right here in our state.
So the, the study committee is bipartisan, and they are recommending this need-based scholarship, so that is one thing to, to look for coming up. I, I also wanted to talk about, Representative Cummings, you talked about fighting the bad laws that come up. Any idea what we might see, you know, I know in the graduate stuff, there's been things like dealing with trans students and things like that, that they've, there's been an effort in that area. What do you see as possible at least this time around? Anything come to mind?
Well, the, the funny one that comes to mind for me is the statue for Justice Clarence Thomas. That's the one that, for some reason, that always just pops in my head first. And, and I'm on the State Properties Committee, and they really wanted to put it down in the rotunda for the General Assembly. And so many people had objections, they decided to try to move it to the Judiciary Center, but it never came up for a vote. I'm, I'm pretty sure that one's coming back this year. With the trans bill, that actually did pass.
Yeah, it did.
Yeah, you know, over, you know, over a lot of our, you know, objections, the expansive tort reform act bill, that did pass, and people were told that their insurance was going to go down. That was a sales pitch, that was on TV. And I can't speak for nobody else in here, but not, I'm not saving a penny on any of my insurance. I haven't seen not one change since that bill had passed. And most of us knew that it wasn't going to be, you know, a change in that area, so that did pass. Outside of what's going on with Clarence Thomas, some of the other bills that were kept out, and I'm trying to remember if there's any others, and I really can't think of another one right now. A lot of, and this is what's, what's good about our Speaker, you know, we're on opposite sides of the aisle, we're all Democrats, but he really does keep a lot of things from coming to the floor. If it's not called, it doesn't get voted on. And he's been, you know, very good at that, but like everybody else, he has to keep, he wants to be reelected also, so, and he wants to maintain that leadership position. So I'm, I'm pretty sure that some of the bills that I label as, as bad, and I'll think about it while we're talking, and come up with a few, a few examples, because there are many more, and Bryce is raising his hand, so he may be thinking of one.
Not just bad bills, but reminder that our main job as legislators is to pass a budget. Everything else we do after that is just fluff and for fun. So when we talk about these bad bills, not really bad bills, they're just distraction bills from what we're actually supposed to be doing. Because people often forget, people think that, oh, our job is supposed to be passing these bills, this, that, and the other. Our job is to pass a budget. That's what we're supposed to be, that's what we're down there, that's what I got elected to do, is to pass a budget. Everything else after that is just for fun. And so we talk about these bad bills, it's just distraction. He's trying to divide people and trying to, again, give red meat to their base, but it's not our job. It's not what we're sent here to do.
So one of the issues that we've been hearing about is affordability, that affordability issue will be big, both on both sides of the aisle coming out. And, and it has been, as we've seen across the country, in New York and other places. So any ideas on how that's going to play out with Georgia in terms of legislation and money and the budget?
Certainly. You know, we, right now, it's so funny, because Georgia, the leaders of Georgia are always proposing that Georgia's the number one state in the country for doing business. And really, that's just a designation that comes from a magazine called Area Development that is based in Georgia. So imagine that, that literally you've got a business in Georgia that is promoting Georgia as the number one state in the country, but that is not necessarily a moniker that is being directed at Georgia by any other state, okay? It's, you know, it's, it's like calling yourself a winner, you know? No, if you are a winner, others should be able to say that. The tough part with us is that any time you hear that, the question really should be, if Georgia's the number one state in the country for doing business, then who benefits from that? And if you find that communities throughout our state are ravaged because you don't have money being placed in the budget for our schools, we have a quality-based education formula that has not been updated in 40 years, what it means is that we have schools that are getting 20, 25 bills, but they're only able to pay for it with 1985 money. You know, is that, is that good business? And when you have, in terms of this focus to make, to allow for corporations to be able to get by, by providing them with tax breaks, but not enough in the terms of regulation, then I think what we're seeing at the Capitol, and certainly in local communities, you all know, who live within the 13-county metro region, when you have a big focus on data centers being placed in, or at least the idea that that might be beneficial to a community, or, you know, we have, I know, I'm in Henry County, and as I told people, I have Henry, a friendly Henry, in South Bestacab, so Southwest de Cab, both of those areas, you're having residents who are looking at, well, what is this major distribution facility or warehouse that you're placing in my area? Is this benefit to me? The problem that we're seeing is that by and large, Georgia is a property rights state, meaning that it's baked into the Constitution where if you're a private landowner, provided that you have nothing illegal on that land, you are able to develop it as you wish. And many times when local residents see that, they're thinking, oh, wait a second, it must be that the local county commissioner got bought out, maybe they're passing the money under the table. No, it's in the Constitution of the state of Georgia. This is, this is going back to the days of slavery. This is, this is literally, it's a part of our state. So what you're often finding at the Capitol is that when you have the majority party there, they're looking to give away tax breaks or, or money to big corporations. So what, the reason why that may be a problem, and I'll just be brief on it, the reason why it may be a problem is because if you can starve a community by not giving families tax credits, like an earned income tax credit for the work that you put in, if you, if you make it so that you heap these costs on to people, then what happens is that those persons have to still pay taxes into the tax base. And that's, that makes it harder for our state to be able to reap those benefits. The state hopes by giving tax breaks to corporations that that will make them big drivers of the economy. But just because a corporation hires people, that does not in and of itself make them job creators. Job creation comes when companies invest into the local economy. And that means by actually putting money together for public-private partnerships, by encouraging apprenticeships, so that you can have students who are coming through high school and they get trade skills. If you have incubators, that's what companies are supposed to do, as well as having community benefit agreements, where local governments, counties, and cities can be able to say, hey, look, we brought the company here, and 25% of the local people work in that company, that there actually, that there's a benefit there. So what you've seen at the Capitol, we often have to create a balance where we want to see our state thrive, we want to see our communities taken care of, but we know that you have to have proper regulation. And if you don't have proper regulation, and you just make it a, a free, open space, then you will attract people who do not particularly care for the people, but care more for making a profit. And that is not good for Georgia in the long term.
So we, we know that data centers and warehouses do not bring in a big property tax break too. So I want to get in the next real quick from each of you, because I want other people to ask questions. So there's going to be a major move to eliminate the state income tax for, or in Georgia. And the person leading that is not only running for office, but he is one of the Senate Appropriations Chair. So briefly, can each of you talk about what that might mean in terms of the way you feel about the elimination of the state incomes tax?
Yes, I, I think we just have to be honest with you all. That is the single worst thing we can do for affordability in this state, is to eliminate the state income tax. Georgia's not Florida, where they have Disney World, that gets the majority of their tax property value in. Georgia's not Tennessee, where they have the highest sales tax in this country. Georgia has continued to cut income tax year after year after year. And the problem with the income tax cut is that it's also linked to the corporate tax code in the state of Georgia. So that's saying that if you get a tax cut, Bank of America and regions, they also get a tax cut. So while the average family gets about $17 in tax cuts, the average corporation's gotten $7,000 in tax cuts year after year after year. So we're talking about eliminating the state, the income tax, that's also limiting the corporate income tax as well. And they also want to constrain the property tax that we are taking in as well. So the main revenue sources we get as a state is income tax and property tax. So you get rid of income tax, you keep constraining property tax, last place you have to go is sales tax. Back to the four billion conversation, we will have higher sales tax. You have to make up a budget some way somehow. There are budget obligations that we have to comply with. Education, Medicaid, SNAP, those are federal requirements we have to comply with. If we take, get rid of our two main sources of revenue, where are they going to come from? Groceries can come for your average everyday items from your mattresses and appliances. It's everything you buy will be going towards covering what Georgia has to comply with for federal law. So with all due respect to the Senate Governor, that is the worst thing that we can do if we're trying to make life more affordable for Jordans.
Anybody else?
I think you need to, one, understand how, how the legislature works in order to understand how it's not going to happen. And with there being, and I'm just coming off the top of my head, 56 state senators and 180 some representatives, 101 of the representatives are Republican. Sure, we have some very good Democrats that are leaving and running for higher office, including Governor for Georgia this year. But we also have a lot of other people who are leaving to run for other government, state government offices as well. As I said earlier, Senator Ford said, power is a powerful aphrodisiac. And people will say and do anything, and in their mind, it may, it may have sounded like a really good idea. As my colleague said about eliminating the state taxes, it's not going to come in the next five years. It is a sedes way for someone to get their foot in the door. But there will be so many thorns and thistles in that path, and then you've got us, not only Democrats, but Republicans who will be voting it up and down for the state government. They'll be fighting on that three, four years into at least two sessions for legislative sessions. It won't happen right away, but it sounds good. It sounds good to the business owners, big business owners, not particularly, particularly to small business owners like me, or someone on the other side. It's not going to come to fruition right away. And if it did, it, it would be a lot of other things. So as we balance out things, if you take away one, it's got the weight off on the other. So just like in, in accounting, one thing has to balance off the other. You lose state income tax coming from us, it's going to go somewhere else. You will pay one way or the other. So I don't think that it will happen right away. It sounds good while you are campaigning. And you can read between those lines.
It'll be interesting to see, like I said, the head appropriations in the Senate is pushing it, and he's also running for office, so. Let's hear from you guys. If you have questions, raise your hand, and I know they're going to bring it around. Take advantage of the fact that you have these wonderful lawmakers here. You guys have questions?
I'm just going to throw just something else out here. With respect to changes on tax law, while it's not just simply majority rules at the Capitol, when it comes to changing our state constitution, it requires a two-thirds majority. That's where Democrats are at play, where we actually have a say, and we've defeated bills that we're going to drastically carve up or an area, or, or even stop some, some things from passing. One of the, I think because we've seen this push by President Trump and his loyalists in Congress and the Senate to stop the states from being able to get access to money of the shrinking of the Department of Education, a lot of these things that, you know, we were, for those of us who in politics and have reviewed journals from the Heritage Foundation and Alec of the American Legislative Exchange Council, we were kind of aware of it long before of the introduction of Project 2025 as a, as a book or as a strategy, that this is something that has been going on since, since Ronald Reagan had, President Ronald Reagan had Lee Atwater as his campaign manager, and even Lee Atwater said, you can, you don't have to say the N-word, if you just say, let's, let's keep taxes low, that means that you're starving money from institutions upon which minorities rely. So this, he said this back in 1987. So we can't be surprised, oh my gosh, what's happening? It's, this is, this is, this is America. This was, this country was not designed to see our success, so that when we do actually succeed, we make this country in what it should have been, not what it necessarily was designed to be. So when it comes to the constitutional amendments, we can actually change that, and we can't influence our colleagues. What we're likely to see is that because the funding is, is on the chopping block in Washington, the state is going to have to pull from its reserves. So whether that means that it's pulling from the $5 billion in undesignated funds that are in our reserves, or whether it means our state is going to have to find another way to generate that income, whether you heard from my colleague talk about the film industry, even though that's, it's now threatened because our state doesn't want to pay benefits, that means film companies are going to have to find ways to secure those funds to take care of the healthcare of their employees. So what's happening? They're leaving Georgia, they're going to London, they're going, they're leaving this country. So the state has to say, okay, what's happening? So now what we've, we've seen over several sessions is that the state is taking up the idea, at least knocking it around, to have sports better, because people do play unregulated sports, you know, on their cell phones. The state doesn't take any money from that, and the state wants to maybe apply a sin tax to it, just a tax to it, just in case that they can be able to help bring in some revenue. Well, because Republicans look at that and say, that's a bad thing, that it's against their morals, they're hoping to get liberals, or, or, you know, Democrats to be able to co-sign with it, because, you know, they're thinking, we're so liberal and we don't have, you know, values. The tough part is, is they've been kicking this around at the Capitol all the time, and now, when Washington is about to cut from that money, they're like, oh, wait a second, we got to get some new revenue here, we got to get money. So that's going to be constantly coming up. So that's going to constantly coming up. Um, this is a state which does not want to see all our communities survive and thrive. It has long continued in a tradition where it has not paid into, uh, seeing that we get equal access. Uh, and, but again, back to my earlier, uh, framing of this, remember, trouble does not last always. Um, Georgia's changing, America's changing. Stacey Abrams, that black woman who did not come from wealth, raised more money than any other person, black, white, or whatever, when she ran for governor, and it wasn't just because of, she may not have won, but her playbook is what allowed for this red state to get Senators Ossoff and Warnock in there. Sometimes when you push a cause so heavy and you structure it, you don't just make it about your personality, but you actually put institutions in place to receive money and to activate communities, you can become a very powerful threat amongst those who do not want to see our communities to succeed, which is why I think for any, I know I'm going off script, but I think anybody who's seeking to win the governorship, until they study what she did, what that genius did, you're just thinking that you're going to win it off your personality. It's not happening. You've got to set up a system of structure to mobilize our communities, because mobilization is how we've been able to get every opportunity we currently enjoy. That's my little stump speech. I'm going to back off so you all can have your questions.
I wanted to say something about the, okay, about what my colleague says about bringing money into the state. So the sports betting, I think the Democrats have been on the fence about, and the Republicans were, uh, totally off the fence. But it came before a committee, uh, in higher education. I don't know how it got assigned to higher education. Um, and you know, there was some of them that were so happy that it was there, and they were just, you know, they were going to just go ahead and listen to the presenter, and the thought was to give money, this is how they were going to buy their way into the bill, give money to pre-K. Well, I'm, I'm a premier foster parent. You don't have to give foster children any coat, socks, hat, shoes, because everybody else will get them for them. Give them what they want, a toy, something that kids actually enjoy, and that says, this is your holiday or this is your birthday. So what they wanted to do is give pre-K, with pre-K already is getting money, they're getting federal money, they're getting state money, they get money from all these organizations and five oh one C threes, nonprofits that help to raise money. Why not put it somewhere it would count? And since you're using the students and you're making money off of their backs who are playing athletic sports, why not put it to use in a college? And before you go to college, please don't talk about UGA, because that's y'all's place. But there's one place in Georgia, if we had to pick a college, it's Savannah State University. They've got thousands of acres out there with buildings that are drying up and blowing away. So my suggestion was that instead of giving the money to the pre-K programs, give one percent to HBCU. One percent of the money that would come in on sports betting is enough to be able to carry every single HBCU and pull it out of its ruin here in the state of Georgia in less than a year. The kind of money that they're going to bring in will rival the Georgia lottery money, if not more, um, because they're making more money on a daily basis off of probably your child's name, likeness, and back, and my nephew's back, who I have custody of. So I would not want my, my nephew who's playing ball now in his senior year, he's a star on his football team. I would not want the state of Georgia to make that money and give it to some, you know, some other college. So once I brought that up, I thank God that our chair saw it that way too. And for him to be, you know, in the majority and, you know, not a person of color, to be able to stop and go, oh my God, what a great idea. I don't know if it was a guilt trip, or maybe he just really thought that through, and we kicked it out of committee. We asked him to come back with it and, you know, think about something else. And I think that's the best way that we can help our HBCUs here in Georgia, the state-run ones as well as the private ones, and there would be tiers to it. So rather than giving to the small babies with already a funding, give to something that's drying up and dying away. Because if not, then if our HBCUs close up, guess where our kids won't be able to go? UGA. I'm just saying, I've been to UGA plenty of times. I would like for my little nephew to get in there too, but only because of the football and the curriculum, and he certainly has the great aptitude to get in there. And most of yours' kids or grandchildren can get into UGA as well. They're getting their HOPE scholarship up there too. And as my colleague said, they have to maintain a B average. If you drop below a two point five for a day, you got to back up and go home, or your parents have to send a check, or you got to go out and find the money. So that's the bad thing about HOPE, and hopefully we'll restructure that this year. It is an election year. Don't anticipate the Democrats to be able to move much this year, because we're having a fight in power in the House and the Senate. Um, things are going to be said, they won't get done, and in the last legislative session, we had eighteen hundred bills come, and I think, I, I want to say on one hand, you could count how many Democratic bills got heard in a committee. That's a lot.
I want to get to the question back there, sir.
Um, so my question is, well. Yeah. Well. Thank you guys.
How y'all doing? Uh, my question is, um, I heard you guys are all former educators or in education's mental healthness. So my question would be, as we're talking about the distribution of funds, as we already said that, you know, you guys said that they are cutting some of the budget within that, and we talk about technology, data centers, all the different things, what are we doing for the protection of kids and elderly? What does that actually look like from a technology standpoint, and how are we integrating that into the schools? And what does that even look like? Is the, is the funding cut for that, or, you know, as you say, entrepreneurs who are actually in that space from that end, those problems such as cyber, sex trafficking, cyberbullying, especially with the evolution of the AI space? What does that look like?
I'm just going to say one thing about, uh, small businesses and nonprofit organizations. One of the greatest, um, departments that the state of Georgia has is Department of Community Affairs. Remember that. You can contact them for not only grants between now and February for five oh one C threes, nonprofit organizations, but small businesses as well. And that's grant money that doesn't have to be paid back. You can also contact them to refinance your home. If you don't have a home and you're looking to buy a home, we have an I HOPE program, which helps people buy homes. Serious people, serious home seekers through the state of Georgia, and people who are, we still have funding, the pandemic, pandemic money that's available for people who are behind in their mortgage, they have not exhausted their budget yet. And at the end of this month, that money goes back into the general pot, and that program will be over. So if you're still fighting, if you're still suffering from a pandemic loss, you are still entitled to go to the state for some of that money. And lastly, um, if you are behind and you ran, we, we have a program. I know all the counties have them, but as I said, this is one of the greatest departments that we have, Department of Community Affairs. So remember that if you're looking for funds there. Um, and to answer another part of your question about seniors, and I know this is like beating the, beating the old wheel here, but if we had passed Medicaid expansion, uh, many of these seniors would be taken care of. A lot of them are going into these senior homes, and if you put your parent, grandparent into a senior home, they take everything they got. They take their, they give their fifty dollars a month for smokes or cigarettes or personal products, but everything else they got, they will sell off and the state will take it. To pay for them to be in their Medicaid expansion would allow for our seniors to be able to go into nursing homes and not lose their legacy that they built for their children or grandchildren. Be able to leave their homes to their family and be able to leave their wealth that they put in their IRAs and five oh ones and all that for their families. That's the biggest thing that we could do for our seniors today, and probably small children as well. So Department of Community Affairs, and hopefully the expansion of Medicaid one day.
Let me respond, thank you. So I know you, Cedric Hill, who's been not only a, um, good veteran, but as a veteran owned business, uh, focuses on making so that our children are not bombarded by anything that is negative. The truth is, is that, um, what we have at the Capitol, while we can't oftentimes pick winners and losers in terms of who receives the contracts or not, uh, we have to still at the same time create an atmosphere by which we can encourage technology and innovation, and particularly that which safeguards our children. You know, we passed, uh, or it was, it was passed, uh, had a lot of issues with it, a school safeties bill, uh, that was really a response to school shootings in rural Georgia. Uh, the problem is that again, because of, you know, our state doesn't, our state values mass incarceration, um, over actually solving a problem, uh, it focused more of its attention on criminalizing children who show signs of criminality, uh, rather than trying to protect them and by installing, uh, technology to keep them safe from doing harmful or just promiscuous or, you know, inappropriate, uh, technology and devices. So oftentimes, that's what we're faced with, is that we see an opportunity, uh, to not only provide a safe space for our children, but also to give small businesses the spotlight who are stepping up to provide that, that answer. The tough part is, is that we're still dealing with a system of government, um, which does not grant minorities access to capital, does not oftentimes allow for a stable competitive environment for businesses to be able to seek contracts. And so, um, that's that part where for us, because we know our constitutional obligation is to pass a budget, we still use that extra time to encourage to our colleagues that maybe by keeping our own kids safe, they may be keeping their children safe. And it's something that actually does have traction. We look at, we look at, uh, rural communities throughout the state, there's no private schools coming over there, they got public schools. And so that means you may not care about urban public schools, but in order to stop, in order to make sure that our, uh, public schools are funded, you're going to have to look at how do we fund our public schools? Um, so the response to that I would have, um, look at our, um, US small business, uh, US Small Business Administration, uh, Business Development Centers. I would encourage you to try to find, um, try to find ways through which your company may be able to contract outside of the state. I want our communities to succeed, I would love to see our businesses to get contracts. But our state's minority participation rate is not even the two percent that Governor Kemp loves to say. That two percent is only what the Federal Department of Transportation makes a requirement of Georgia to look at how many minority contracts are set aside in the transportation space. Outside of transportation, if you apply that two percent across the board, the actual number is zero point zero zero one four percent. That's minority contracting in the state of Georgia. What that, what does that mean in terms of what does it look like? That's a hundredths of a penny. So I would love to see businesses like yours being able to contract with our state. I would love to see our legislators really look at protecting our children and providing the technology that would do that. But unfortunately, until we can change the ethos, uh, in our legislators' minds where they don't look at our community's children and see the value in them as they do their own, I would highly encourage you to go to a state that will respect your company and see you for the value that you're worth.
One more question?
Thank you so much. I think Representative Barry, you talked about this in your initial introduction. We have a housing crisis, and let me caveat that by saying horrible housing crisis. What can we do at the local level, whether we're working with our various municipalities to kind of curb that, particularly because I think we have about three large companies that own all rental property, and they're setting those particular rental rates and things like that. What can we do at the local level?
So locally, there are several things we can do. We can ban that. Simple, we can ban that. We can say that any corporation that owns more than, you cannot own more than twenty thousand houses. I think that's the bipartisan plan that's been offered and the legislator has not gotten a vote yet, um, so we need your advocacy for that. Um, we're talking about AMI, which is the average median income. That is set by the federal government. But, so unfortunately, we have no control over what is considered affordable. Um, Atlanta is considered affordable by Sandy Springs metrics as well. So we have Sandy Springs income combined with Atlanta income, and I think it's also Roswell, Roswell income. So combining all, so you think that a person on, in Cascade makes the same amount as a person in Sandy Springs? That's ludicrous. So we have to redefine what AMI means, and we need to work with our fellow partners, um, Congressman Williams and Senator Ossoff, who will be leaving those charges as well. I talk, I have a bill about blighting, that's another issue that we see locally, where corporations will buy land and then don't develop on that land. So my bill says that if you don't develop within two years, the state can take it over. And what that means as well is the state will also give money to HOAs, into community organizations, into neighborhood associations, um, so that they can have that money so they can build on that land as well, hopefully turn that land into property. Um, Atlanta does that, Atlanta has a really good blighting policy, and trying to get the state to replicate that. That bill got a hearing, it got passed, um, it, hopefully we get a hearing again this session so we can pass it in time for crossover day. Um, but blighting is another big issue that we should tackle the state. But talk about contracts and who we give contracts to, and ensuring that if we're giving you a contract, X amount of homes that you build have to be considered affordable, I don't even say affordable anymore, I say low income. Because affordable, as I said, is not affordable. Uh, my rent is fourteen dollars a month, and sometimes I can't afford that. So like, we need low income housing. We need low, we need housing for low income individuals and families in the state and in the city. Again, we cannot keep lumping Atlanta with Sandy Springs and with Roswell, just as we can't lump Atlanta with Macon and Columbus. All of our cities are different, all our regions in the state are different. And so we need a whole-scale approach that brings all the counties and cities together to say, what's working in your county, and how can we replicate that as a state? And I think, I view governing as a continual kind of thing. You try something, if it doesn't work, you come back to the planning board, you do it again. It doesn't have to be, you try it, it's going to work automatically, you're done. Governing is continual. We've been a democracy for the past two hundred and fifty years because we continually worked on this democracy, continually made it better. So when we talk about all the things we can do with housing, it's not the end-all, be-all, it's just, let's try something different, let's try something new, and if it doesn't work, we can come back to the drawing board, luckily we have a session the next year, try it again. But we have to keep trying something, because families are being priced out of their, seniors are being priced out of their homes, families are being priced out of their homes, school districts are losing money. This is a, this is a, not just an Atlanta problem, this is a state problem. It's looking down at Macon. Blighting has hurt Macon, blighting has hurt Columbus, blighting has hurt Savannah. This is a whole of state problem where families can no longer afford to live in this state.
Okay, I want to.
I just want to add, um, to that first, Atlanta, when people outside the state talk about Atlanta, they're really talking about the entire metro area and, and all the surrounding areas. And Atlanta was officially taken off the list of affordable places to live, uh, um, I'm not sure, within the past couple of years. But if you look at your cities, I'm, I'm going to have to give props to Atlanta, the real Atlanta, not the surrounding areas where, um, quite frankly, Mayor Dickens has put things in place to, um, come up and build affordable homes in different areas of the city, and, um, he's actually created a special task force, and they've just had the resources to make, um, of, build affordable homes in different areas and make that become a reality. What really has to happen is that where you live, like I'm in Cobb County, and I'm going to be honest, Cobb County just does not have the, um, commitment to really do something about it. We have a lot of talk, but not really the commitment to really tackle it and do something about it, and it's absolutely a problem. And my particular area where our people are looking, I've had to refer them to programs in Atlanta, and I've had to tell them, hey, I don't want to lose you, you know, but at some point, you have to do what's best for you and
but at some point you have to do what's best for you and your family. And what Atlanta, I actually found a site where they don't have low-income homes. The, um, homes and that housing is income-based, which I personally love. It's based on your income. And it's an individual decision about what you can afford based on your income. And that's where I've been referring some, some, um, folks that just can't find any place in my area that is, um, um, affordable. And I think Representative, um, Holly said earlier, is that Atlanta is a magnet for predatory lending, for predatory housing, because there are no protections in place. And that's why you have these invitation homes and all these other folks that come down and buy up entire subdivisions. And they don't sell them. And that means for any young family that wanted to have that first home, that opportunity is taken away. Now, there were pieces of legislation that were introduced, you know, um, um, this past session. And, you know, hopefully some of those will be coming back to try to tackle the issue. But like most things, I kinda think we get caught behind the eight ball because in other states, they couldn't even enter that state and, and buy up subdivisions and blocks and blocks and blocks. The laws are already in place to prevent that, you know? So like, even if we put those laws in place, the damage to me is already done because those homes have already been purchased and, um, there are problems. They don't even take care of what they buy, you know? But it, and, and even when it comes to like, um, um, and, and my county and, and my district is a, an area that also has a problem where these apartment buildings, they're owned by outside entities. They're falling apart, um, they're not fixing them. And what my city actually did, they didn't wait for the state. They actually came up with an ordinance now where, um, if the property's not being taken care of, they can consider that property as being abandoned. And they can move in and take it over. And so, um, yeah, the state is good, but sometimes the cities do a much better job. A- and that's why local government is so important. They do a much better job of tackling the specific problem in their specific area. And the two areas that like I, I said before, Atlanta's doing a, um, one hell of a job with building housing opportunities and creating, and they just have the, um, creating homes where there were none. They can do tiny homes. Cobb County won't allow tiny homes, you know? So now, but now that Mableton i- is a city, Cobb County won't even allow ADUs. And all the ADU is you put a little house in back and you're on your property in your backyard for your kids or for your parents or somebody to live. Cobb County won't even allow that. But guess what? The city of Mableton does, you know? So that's where the, um, local politics really, really comes into play. Unfortunately, I think that's, fortunately and unfortunately, I think that's where a lot of the answers are going to come from, because they can't, they can't keep waiting for us while we're down there, you know, fighting each other. And, a- and it really is a bipartisan issue. You can't go to anywhere, um, even the mayor of Sandy Springs said that his own children can't afford to come back and live where they grew up. Everybody's just, you know, priced out. But it's the local level, the local, local level where I'm seeing the, the, um, change and where, you know, I'm being hopeful because they are responding directly to their local constituents.
So you've heard a lot of information about a lot of different things from these wonderful legislators, and you've also heard that it is important to go to your local officials at city, the municipal level and all of that. And what it actually they've given you is a challenge to support them in what they're doing down at the Capitol and support your local leaders wherever they are. And so we gotta wrap up now, but I think there are a lot of things that you should be thinking of that you can support when this legislature comes about. And every time it's time for you to vote for anything, to get to the polls, not only you, everybody now. So, Representative Holly, what, what, what?
I just wanted to, uh, every day we do do this work, we appreciate, um, the strong example, um, and classic examples of the women of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. Um, our sisters in this work do include Senator Tanya Anderson, do include, um, our minority leader Carolyn Hughley, Representative Darshawn Kendrick, Representative Inga Willis, Representative Karen Bennett, Representative Dr. Anisa Jones. Okay. And, and Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated really holds us down. So while we appreciate you giving us the opportunity to be able to speak about the policy, just know too, that you have some very legitimate sisters who are representing us in the Capitol as well as those who keep us accountable in the news. And we just appreciate you all taking the time to really allow us to become centered because when we go into that Capitol, it, it behooves us to remember who are the people who put us into the position. And you are always at the top of minds when we come to actually battle or to negotiate. So thank you.
Well said. That's a wonderful way to wrap up. Do you have time for that? How's it gonna be? Do we have time for our closing? Go ahead.
One of the things I wanted to share real, real quick when it comes to some of the, um, bad bills that are coming up. I don't know if most of you know that the law was passed that, um, bans, um, criminalizes, um, the distribution of sexually explicit materials. And that is a, um, for me, it's subjective because it could be words or it can be pictures. What's coming up next year now is that there's going to be a push to, um, to make librarians criminally responsible if this material is found in a library. Right now, they get legal protections because again, it's subjective. You know, somebody may think Playboy hustle is something, um, what, what's considered sexually explicit to somebody else may be a book with words, you know, even if it's coming to, um, coming of age. The voting, which we talked about, um, earlier, if you track SB two fourteen, that's the legislation which did pass the Senate in twenty twenty-five and is mandating those, those paper ballots. Right now, it's in the House Committee that I serve on, which is, um, um, Public Safety. Um, and we don't know where it's going to go, but it's coming back in twenty twenty-six. And it will probably move, um, out of committee. The most controversial bill, and I think somebody mentioned it, there are actually two, SB thirty and HB eleven seventy, which bans, um, transgender care for youth. Even if the parents, um, want it, even if the doctor wants it, and they've gone through all the procedure, it's outright, you know, bans it. It kinda stalled in twenty twenty-five, but that's coming back in twenty twenty-six. So I wanted to make sure that I gave you some examples of the bills that, you know, are concerning. Other than that, I wanna, um, thank you for the opportunity to spend this evening with you. I am gonna have to say for transparency, I'm a delta. Delta submits to sigma theta. And there are a lot of us also down at the Capitol holding things down. And, and, um, I just think it takes all of us, you know, working in, in the same direction. And, and that's what I see. But thank you again. I hope everybody has a wonderful and safe holiday. Um, I wanted to bring up a bill that we passed this year. I think it's probably the greatest bipartisan bill that we passed. Um, I know we're only there to do a budget, and that's wonderful because that's how the entire state runs. It's how, the budget is how educators get paid, their retirement and all the government workers as well. And all of our counties get paid. It's through the work that we do on the budget. Um, but we are there to create and mandate laws. Um, so one of the greatest bipartisan bills that we passed this year with all of the hoopla between the two parties going on, Washington and the Sen- US Senate and the US House, is the fact that Georgia passed a bill that allows foster children to go to school, to go to higher education for free. And so if you are a foster parent or you know someone who's a foster parent, when their, that kid gets seventeen and is graduating from high school, there is not a dead end for them anymore. They are allowed to go to college in the state of Georgia at a Georgia university for absolutely free. It includes a room, board, books, food, transportation to and from. Um, and they get a stipend every month. So we did do something for the children, um, bipartisanly this year that no other state has done so far. So I'm really proud of that work that we've done. So if you know someone who's a foster parent, if you are considering being a foster parent, they don't have to sit there and put them on the other side of the door on the eighteenth birthday. They can go to college now. And it is easy as one, two, three. Um, and it start, it starts this year. It started as of July first. That's all I wanna say. And thank you all.
Uh, thank you for having us tonight. Um, my final message for you, just remember your collective power. Remember that it's power in numbers and it's power in our unity. Um, I don't remember an immigrant that has stolen our healthcare. I don't remember a trans person that has made groceries more, less affordable. But I know that there are forces out there that are doing that. And so remember that we have, we have each other. That's all we have at the end of the day. We have each other. We can fight back together. We can fight for the good and the best in all of Jordan together. So just remember the collective power. Hope to see all the gold dome soon. Um, we go back on January twelfth and hope to see y'all. If you can be there all the forty days, hopefully someday ninety days. You know, I hope to see, hopefully ninety days. We'll see y'all soon. Thank y'all for having us tonight.
Did you wanna say anything, Representative Holly? I, I, I laughed because you want it to be a longer legislative session. And lawmakers talk about it. And the other lawmakers were not, not looking to go ninety days. Okay.
So, yeah, only.
Great. We want out.
So, so sometimes you, you introduce, uh, bills to create a conversation. And I think the conversation we wanted to create was the fact that, um, Georgia has never really respected, um, the working class representative. Um, Georgia's earliest lawmakers, they had to fulfill three requirements. You had to first own fifty acres. On the fifty acres, you had to own one hundred mulberry trees. You had to have planted. And then thirdly, you had to have a woman, didn't specify, but we kinda know. You had to have a woman whose yearly yield was fifteen pounds of silk. What's the correlation to all that? The silkworm eats mulberries in order to actually produce that thin fiber to create that fifteen pounds of silk. But what it means too, is that our legislature never required entry based upon your dutifulness to the Constitution, whether you could read the preamble. No, it was based on wealth. And so because we're in a part-time legislature, but still expected to do full-time work, I look at my colleagues in New York who are earning a hundred and twenty-four thousand, they get a, they get a million dollars, uh, uh, no, I mean, Philadelphia gets a million dollars on a match, which is crazy. We're not, we're not looking for that. But we know good and well that the work we do is on the side of our private daily lives that we have to do. Um, but our wealthy colleagues who work in, many of them are beneficiaries of that early institution that, and that didn't see our ancestors as on the same level as theirs. We know that that money has actually trickled down the, down generation to generation, and they've been a beneficiary of it. So this is, until we talk about stabilizing a system to make it fair for everybody, sometimes we have to produce bills that will actually create the conversation around, are we as legislators getting compensated in a manner that is respective of our colleagues in other states? And even if it doesn't see the light of day, um, if you're able to just talk about the possibility of people being valued, uh, I think it helps legislators when they realize that maybe there's some value to what their work is beyond that forty days. I think that it actually might influence them to respect everyday workers who are out here, who do not see the benefit of a minimum wage increase, who do not see the benefit of a higher worker's compensation rate, because Georgia's the lowest, um, who do not see families being able to, being provided with a way to respect them for the amount of money that they're, they're spending in. Sometimes the biggest, the best way to a legislator's heart is through their own pockets. So that's all that was intended to do. But yeah, thank you.
We do work every day. Except for this is morning. And even then, we have to play politics with our family.
And, uh, we're working right now. I'm glad to be the campaign manager for Roger Bruce, who is on the ballot for December sixteenth election. Early voting is going on to this week between Monday through Friday in Cobb and, and, uh, Fulton County. So if you care about elections, if you care about elections, whether you live in that district or not, please do your part to learn more about that and then encourage us all to vote because, uh, that's how we have been able to gain every right we have. Thank you.
Okay. And we just wanna remind everyone, this was streamed, so please share with your friends and family. We want to express a special thank you to Reverend Augustine for welcoming us into the store and church of Big Bethel AME Church. If there are any church members in the audience, please stand to be recognized.
Yeah.
The new Lambda Omega chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated is grateful for the opportunity to, to partner with Big Bethel in providing what we hope has been a meaningful presentation to our community. We know that the old African proverb is true for all. It takes a village. Thank you, Miss Gabbard.
Thank you.
We just wanna thank our president, Dr. Daniel Duggar, for always supporting the committee and being there when we need her. And to all the representatives, we appreciate each of you for taking your time. You could've been anywhere tonight, but you decided to be here with us. That means a lot. To the award-winning journalist who is also in our chapter, Ms. Lowry, thank you always. I've been watching you since I was younger. So it's always grateful to be in the presence of you. To the guests and visitors, thank you for coming. And to the Advocate for Social Justice Committee, would you please stand? We appreciate you. And thank you, everyone. Be safe and happy holidays. Oh, I just had to add this. Representative Holly, you forgot to say that Bruce will produce.
Roger, Roger Bruce will produce. Thank you, Ms. Turner.
If we could just take a couple of minutes to get some quick pictures, then we will. Be on the way. So we'll be down, we'll take pictures down here. We won't hold too much longer. And if all. Thank you so much.